Welcome, calling the meeting of the Board of Selectmen for June 25th to order at 6:34 PM. I'd like to welcome our new Recording Secretary, Joy. Thank you for being here. And I hope you continue. This isn't your only meeting. We have five, well, now we're down to one person online. And we have quite an audience of citizens, so... Shall we start with the Secretary's report? From May 28th, it was just Dwayne Gates and myself in attendance, so...
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May 28th, 2024.
Okay. And...
I'll second it, but I'll abstain from the vote.
Okay. And did you happen, I know you wrote it?
I read them.
Okay.
We're, I'm happy with everything that was in there. And thanks for adding those two things I put in on.
Yeah, okay. All right, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passed. Okay, Audience of Citizens, looks like we have quite a group here. Please remember to state your name and keep your comments short, and it's really not meant to be a question and answer period. Are you ready, Joy? Yeah?
Gary Clark, 46 Laurelwood Drive. I just, um, I just want to make a statement. Can we send the town crew to Laurelwood? I believe we're starting to lose that road. If you drive down the road every 15 feet, there's a, there's a subcrack all the way across. And when you get to the lowest portion, they cut the curb and put riprap in to drain the water off of the low spot. And now that low spot is not where the opening is, and water puddles. And again, if you follow that whole road and just look at it, you can see the subcracks all the way across from one end all the way to the other. And where the driveway entrances were put in, it's sank about an inch and a half so far. And it's gonna, we're gonna lose the road. If you lose the sub base, I'm sure Dwayne can tell you, that's where you start to lose the road.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
The agenda mentions the marking of the police cars, doesn't mention the markings of town vehicles.
It does not.
Well, when are we gonna mark those? They're town property, they should be marked accordingly.
You're right, I should have probably had that to the agenda.
And I've got that as a bonus on it, too.
Yes. We are looking at, well, we'll get to that, but thank you. Anyone else? Oh, Allison.
Yes, I'm actually here, just to follow up on the last meeting for bringing forward the person that we had proposed for the website, had passed in EDC. And so I sent that to you, but I'm not sure, so we'll have to see if you guys might be able to. And also, the addition of the seats to EDC. So I'm hoping that...
Allison, what was the first issue I was prepared on, what was it?
We had accepted a proposal from a man in town, who, we're actually in Chester, who would be bringing back the EDC website, and working with us on, on moving forward with, for EDC.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on, so, number four, Town Hall building issues update. So last we met, we talked about how OSHA had come in and done investigation inspection of quite a few of our facilities. They are in the process of getting back to us to set up a meeting, to come back and go with, meet with all those same department heads and go over her findings. So the date of that has not been set up, but it's probably gonna be after the 4th of July, so maybe that next full week. It's hard to get all the parties on good dates, so...
So you'll notify us, Dwayne and I, so we can come to that meeting?
If she would like you there, I will do that, yeah.
I would like us there.
She seems very specific about who's there.
If it's possible.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, then...
A question on that, Carol?
Yeah?
With the problems with the mold, do we have any outstanding warranties or anything on any of the equipment we've installed for, for dehumidification or anything here in the town hall that we can call on with this problem?
No, so the OSHA was one thing, and then the next thing I was gonna report on is the mold in the basement.
Mm-hmm.
So those don't go hand in hand with the OSHA inspection.
Fine, but are you done with OSHA? Are we all set with OSHA?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, great, so, thank you. Moving on to mold, I must wondering, I don't know, did we have any equipment warranties or anything outstanding? I don't know when the last time was we updated.
I don't believe we did.
Nothing?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So the mold report would be, the hygienist, Dick Layton, sent him the report on Sunday. We're waiting to hear back from a gentleman that works for Environment to set up something here, help him come and look at our, you know, our issues downstairs, kind of come up with the scope of work, so that we can figure out, move forward with that. Update to police car markings, so that's something that we had talked about putting back on when we had, so I got two designs back from the police. One is more of a ghost design, and one is a brighter design. The ghost design sort of blends in more with the car, it's a little bit like lower profile, if you will. The prices range from about $750 to $1,200 a car. We wanted to get a third design, so that we could have three vendors kind of putting in an offer for the, the work. The town vehicles, we did talk to Phil Shaler, and he's designing the town seals and stuff like that to go on the town trucks. I think that's what we're probably gonna go with.
Okay.
So, so that'll be done here in Deep River. The couple companies that Steve got through Resident Trooper were out of town, like Old Lime, I believe, East Line, so...
So if we were thinking about it, probably could be done in about a month's time, roughly, we think?
Yeah, once they decide on the, the design, but with Steve getting the designs, I think it's, it was a better choice doing it that way than us doing it, because the police are already putting their input in when Resident Troopers coming up with the design. Okay, ARPA general discussion. So we, on our parking lot, was the letters to all the groups that had received ARPA monies, so those letters did go out. We heard back from, the fire department was first back, you know, they were really good about getting back to us, the Deep River ambulance got back. We have not heard from the library, and we have not heard from Park and Rec. But at this point, Park and Rec, I think, has to, since, you know, jumping down to the next one with the, that nice event they had, they have to kind of see where, where they are with that expenditure right now for the music fest. If they got $75,000 for, we spent over three years. So they're preparing to get back to me about what they have left and what they're gonna use and that sort of thing, but we have not heard from the library at this point.
Well, they've got till the 30th, right, so they've got a couple of days to get under the wire.
Right, yeah.
Um, my understanding on the $75,000, and actually for all the other projects, we need a signed contract by December. So we need a signed contract, and I guess the thinking is, on the music festival, would they be thinking of doing signed contracts out two years if it's gonna be an ongoing project?
No, I, I think that's gonna be kind of an impossible thing, so we'll have to see what, what their thought process is on that. But that's exactly right, we have to have a signed contract by December 2024, money has to be spent by '26, so...
Do we have a, so we don't have a sense of what, how much might come back? Gotta wait till they all come in on that, too?
Yeah, I think, to be fair, they just had their big event, and we have to give them a minute to go over their receipts, their expenses, and, you know, that kind of thing. But again, the other groups have spent what they were supposed to spend, so...
They have good...
Yeah.
So we have, still have roughly $221 outstanding?
We have about, I had actually $205, but is it $221?
It was $220, I thought it was around $221.
Yeah, okay, and I know we had promised, or kind of, I don't know if we wanna say promised, but we were thinking of doing about $100,000 at the transfer station. I reached back out to Jacobson about helping me come up with maybe a redesign of the front road, you know, the front gate area or something like that, so I still don't have a cost for that.
So we, where were we on, it seems like it's been so long trying to remember where we were on this. We had at one point agreed, the three of us, to move forward monies for planning and zoning, and also for signage and some of the videos with Jerry. That has not yet been approved by Board of Finance, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
The last two times we presented to the Board of Finance, they voted those down.
So what are we thinking, timing wise? We wanna get our thoughts together on that?
I was hoping we could come up with another meeting that would just be ARPA, us three, we could sit down, and that's, that would be the only thing on the agenda would be, again, go over those projects again, maybe at the Board of Finance meeting tonight, we can get a sense of where they're at with what, you know?
Plus by then, we may have a number of what some of this remediation work is gonna cost.
Exactly, and...
That may shift our thinking.
Maybe we hear then from Park and Rec, another, you know, maybe the library tells us. The library, I guess, also has a, a tough spend in a way, like they got a chunk of money, if I understand it correctly, and they were spending it on, some of that money was going towards programs. But the programs are very small, so there's a lot of smaller checks getting written against what they were awarded. So again, I don't know, come the end of the year, if, um, again, I don't know if, by the end of December, if all those programs would be planned for, you know, or something like that, so we'll have to see.
They did pay for that beautiful circulation desk, so...
Yeah.
That's done.
It's beautiful, absolutely, which I think is, yeah, told them, no, that's good. So if you guys would like, we'll do that, ARPA, we'll have a special meeting for ARPA.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, so Parks and Recreation Route 154 Music Fest, I just put on, that on there as a general, just to give a shout out to the Parks and Rec Department, our first responders that were there, Top Notch. We had the ambulance on standby, we had, Top Notch was there along, for a lot of the time on Sunday, because they kept tripping the, you know, he had plenty of power, but they kept plugging all, everything into like one plug, you know, so... But let's see, then we had a lot of merchants there, and the Park and Rec people that were there, a lot of volunteers, you know, you know, people in the audience, some of the people were here volunteering. So it was very nice, and the police did a great job, and, so kudos to them. There is gonna be a wrap-up meeting for that event, so if anybody here, anybody watching was at the event or heard comments, let's put those all together, send me an email. If you'd like to come to the meeting, it'll be a public meeting, but...
So it'll be sometime in the next couple weeks, we think?
We're hoping for around, the Park and Rec meets on the 10th, so we're hoping somewhere around, we were hoping for the 11th, but Chris Morrow, who did the majority of the work for that festival, actually isn't available on the 11th, so we really need him to be there, so...
The weather just didn't cooperate on Saturday, it was so hot, and it drove by, and, you know, the attendance, Saturday with that heat was disappointing. I mean, it only looked like about 20 people there Saturday. But then I, it went by again, on Sunday, better attended, and I gather the last event was the big draw.
It was, and Saturday, there was more than 20 people, but they were all pretty much around the fence and finding the shade, you know? But then it, it rained pretty well, and I think by the opening, the big draw event, the headliner that night, there was, I was told about 150 people or something, people came back, you know?
I, I know we'll have the wrap-up meeting, but a couple things while they're, they're fresh in my mind, a couple calls came that, at the end of the night, for some reason, the people exiting was diverted through the neighborhood instead of coming out main streets. There were a few complaints about that, there may have been a reason, but with security, I don't, you know, I don't know why that happened. And then there was a question after the rain with the parking on the lawn and on part of the ball field, what is the state of that? Maybe we can check with Mike and Chris, and just see, how does that lawn look after all of that? Maybe it's fine, don't know.
Yeah, would you mind sending me an email with those items?
Happy to.
So that way I can keep all of that for that wrap-up meeting, that would be more helpful than me, because I'll forget, my little notes are here, but those are good points, and I, I don't know the answer to either of them. That Saturday, I was there in that pouring rain, under one of the tarps, and, you know, the field was, you know, it drains really well. People actually said, there's not a lot of water on that, the infield, draining very well, so our Jill Cazaro's guys do a great job, you know? But, so I don't really know what it looked like after everybody drove off, but... All right, Region 4 School Mold Remediation Report, Field Update Security Project. I know you're involved with the mold remediation, so if you have a field update or security you wanna throw in, but if you wanna give us an update, Dwayne?
Yeah, well, two weeks ago, when I had the last meeting, I gave you an update saying that Phase 1 is, is done. Bids were open today for Phase 2, those two contractors, and both of them came in significantly over budget. They're gonna try to meet tomorrow to do some value add engineering, to see if there's a way to get back down to where we need to be. There's a lot of unforeseen things that they're bidding on that they just, we believe they just do numbers in. Because there's a number of valves that have to be changed, but they don't know how many valves have to be changed. So it's tough to bid on something when you don't know exactly what you're bidding on.
Could you remind me what Phase 2 is?
Phase 2 is all the new insulation, new ceiling tiles, the new mechanicals. There was an alternate, if the numbers came in where we wanted them for dehumid, dehumidifiers, but it's way, it's way over, so... We have two local contractors, one from Essex, Noble Construction, and the other one was from Clinton, Pelleteer, and they were within $250,000 of each other.
But still way over the anticipated...
So, like I said, there's some meetings tomorrow with the engineer, Arcadia's, the, you know, the CM, and the builds, a couple of building people that are on the Building Committee to try to come up with ways to try to save some money. And then we have our meeting, our normal meeting Thursday night, and we were hoping to make an award Thursday night, because the quicker we make the award, they were supposed to start work next week. But I don't know what's gonna happen, so I will keep you both abreast of what happens tomorrow and Thursday, and we'll go from there.
Dwayne, any sense that it will be done, say, by Thanksgiving time? Do we, is there any sense of that project plan?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna touch that, because...
It looks like it may be a...
With, again, I could, I could say something tonight, and if these contractors can't come down to where we need them, we have to decide what we do. Do we spend that extra money? Do we try to put it about for a rebid? So there's a lot of moving parts, and every day that we miss is farther out on the other end. So there's, there's a lot of variables, a lot of moving target right now that I will not, I will not make a comment. I would love to have it open in September like we all wanted it to, but I don't, I don't believe...
Too soon to tell, yeah?
Yeah, there's too many, too many variables right now.
Is there also any reason why we only got two bids? Were they expecting a lot?
No, it's, it's a, it's a, for one thing, it's a small bid, and it's, we need them to start now. You know, a lot of people that do school construction, they're bidding these projects back in March and April, anticipating for June starts. So a lot of contractors have work already, and they don't bid, so it's, it's unfortunate. You know, there was another big job, I believe, over in Old Lime, that a lot of contractors went after that project, so, you know, it's unfortunate. The field update, they're starting to put subgrade down now, they're starting to put the curbing around the track. Again, I'm not part of that committee, but I've talked to some people, and I've been up there observing, and they're moving along quite well. The security project, I have, I have no update on that, because I don't, I'm not part of that committee.
Okay, well, thank you. I know the field didn't look too bad at graduation.
Yeah, no, they, they moved it, they stripped it pretty quick, and...
Yeah, and I mean, it kinda looked like it was, okay, yeah. I know Catherine, you asked me to put the follow-up to drainage issue on Oak Ridge Drive property on there, so I don't know if you had anything to add to that. But I talked to Eric, and he said bids for the work are due by Friday, and I guess there's some talk about putting in a bigger drainage pipe. But I didn't get all the specifics of what was getting bid on. But again, they're due by Friday, so at this point, it's a, like a closed bid kind of thing, so probably don't wanna talk about too much else, but...
Okay, and we're still paying for that pumping equipment, so the sooner we move on that and get it started, the less the cost will be, that's pretty much it.
Right, well, we're hoping to still get reimbursed by the homeowner at some point.
So the pumping cost?
Right. And I know you're, it's kind of your neighborhood, so...
Right, the homeowner's gonna pay from where the creek starts through their property out to Tower Hill.
Yeah.
And then from Tower Hill down to the basin, the town is gonna pay for it.
And that's where they're putting the bigger pipe in.
Correct.
So is it roughly a split cost of the whole project, or it's just, you can't tell?
I wouldn't say 50/50, but it's, if, if you measured it out, it's probably pretty close to, you know, the same amount of distance. But when you come on, we'll call it Phase 2, coming down Tower Hill, you have to rip up the asphalt, so it's gonna be all new asphalt put there. So that, that will increase our price, so...
Thank you. Okay, then I just put Town Meeting Update, so for those who missed the meeting last night, we were able to appoint, voted in two new members for the Planning and Zoning Board. So thank you for volunteering to, to do that, to the gentleman that got voted in. We also pulled the fees for planning and zoning out of the ordinance, and we did approve the new fees for planning and zoning, so now we're more in line with all the neighborhood towns that they had done the research, we were. Nobody's talking online there. And then, we also are, pulled the fees out for the, fees for the transfer station, so that now we have the ability to change the prices for some of our disposal costs, like tires. So now we're at liberty to, to address those numbers, so they were pulled out. So that was good, you know, good outcome. Bulky Waste Disposal Agreement with Chester. So we've been going back and forth, and that looks like it's all gonna be signed, Chester's gonna be back on board. Pretty much the same price as last year, $105,000 they will pay us, that includes $30,000 for brushed chipping. And then we also are gonna re-enter into our sweeping agreement for street sweeping, and that'll be about, I think about $20,000, $21,000, something like that, yeah? So if we don't get that signed by July 1st, then we're just gonna extend our contract that we have now for 30 more days, just to give everybody time. But it's been reviewed by Town Council, and both the Selectmen in Chester and myself, and our Public Works Department, our Building Inspector, so, who is also works for Chester, so, yeah? Any questions on that? All right, Audience of Citizens, we are back to public comment, if anyone would like to say a word, yes?
I'm Peter Dowd, change the, go ahead. This police car marking issue that we've been going through, these are town cars that taxpayers pay for, they should be marked as town cars. This ghost marking, there's no reason for ghost marking, we don't need a blacked out police on the side of a black car, okay? They should be marked prominent, so that people can see, okay? It's a simple design, I sent the select people pictures of police cars, all the local ones, okay? I've been to the printers, and I've talked to the people, and it's a simple thing, police, town logo. You can use the same town logo on a police car, use on the town trucks. Essex installs their own, so if you're looking at the cost of installation, if you've got anybody, they can do it themselves. But the cars should be marked, so that people can see them. These are police cars, these are taxpayer dollars, and they should be marked. Now, this has been going on for a while, this was all okay, and it's been a while since anybody really has done anything. You know, this is the first I heard of having a meeting about it. And when did we get Board of Finance okay on it? How many months ago?
It's been more than a month.
Okay, so, you know, we're dragging our feet, we're asking our officers what they want on their car. They're not their cars, they're our cars, they belong to us. We mark them as we see fit. Police, and you let them know that they're police. Same thing with town trucks, they should be, town vehicles should be marked. If you're gonna buy them, you, it's included in the price of the purchase of the truck, it's a done deal, okay? You just can't, your taxpayer dollars are all over the place, and nobody sees them. You can say, oh, well, we have all red trucks. I see a whole bunch of red trucks, okay? Oh, we have police cars, and they're all different, well, they shouldn't really be different, they should be all the same. Because then everybody knows the design is the same, the, to make, the maintenance is going to be cheaper because they are all the same. You, you need to pay attention to what you're doing. Now, you can tell me that Wayland gives you this stuff, okay, and that's great. We still pay insurance, okay, we still pay for fuel. The town pays for these vehicles, period. They should be marked accordingly, and they should be seen. Most, forget it, I've seen them.
Thank, thank you. Yeah?
Fred Jordan, North Sound Street. In regards to the music festival, were there town expenses that were not included in their ARPA funds that the town has incurred for this festival? Police overtime, any other services provided?
Not at this point, it was all kind of the, in their, their budget. And we have a question, somebody online?
Yes? This is the homeowner at Oak Ridge Drive, and I'd like to...
Oh!
Clarify, clarify where we are with this, because it's been a long time. And we have pumps in our yard that are no longer being used, that should be removed regardless of who's paying for them.
Okay.
And I'd like to know how much longer it's gonna be before we have resolution.
Okay. So who owns the pumps that are in your yard? Are these the ones that were rented?
Yeah, yes.
Apparently, yes.
Yes.
How long have they been sitting there unused?
Uh, I'm gonna say two months now.
They haven't been used for the last two months?
I'm gonna say that, yes. I mean, I don't, I didn't mark it on the calendar, but once the rainy season and the spring ends, you know, there's no more flooding. But there's still issues that need to be resolved fairly quickly, because I have to find a heating system before we flood again, before, you know, I have to know how much money I have to pay, so that I can take out a loan to cover these expenses. And, you know, here we are, almost four months later, and I know nothing.
Gotcha, well, I, I know, I was told the, the bids are due by this Friday, so I think, you know...
I was told that six weeks ago, so...
I was just told that about an hour ago, so, hopefully, hopefully, we move something forward then for you, sorry about that.
It sounds like it's been a tough process, and thank you for...
It's fine, I've tried to bear with the patience, but, you know, it's time to move.
Lisa, it's Dwayne, how are you tonight?
You know, if the town can't move on it for some reason, we're going to, because we, I can't have my house flooded again.
I'm sure that's why they left the pumps there, in case we got another big rain, because they were, when I was out there way back when, it was really hard to find those pumps. Everybody was flooding everywhere, and...
I understand, but what I'm saying now is they're sitting there doing nothing. In fact, someone came to check on them today, and they won't even start up anymore, so...
Oh, gosh. Do you have anything, Dwayne?
No, I'll, I'll...
Okay. All right, thank you, Lisa. All right, thank you, Lisa. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Forty, Gary Clark, forty-six Laurelwood Drive. Dwayne, um, phase one, how much did it go over?
About a hundred and some thousand. I think they found some problems over the main office and the nurses' room that were not picked out in the beginning. But there's contingency money that was in there, so if you want to say it's over.
But listen, I, I was expecting more than that, so.
We're, we're, right now, we're okay, but not as of today with the new bids. We'll definitely be over, so that's why they're trying to do some data engineering to figure out where they could possibly save. One of the problems was the cleaning, when they cleaned all the rooms out. Those two hundred and thirty-six boxes of personal property that were, the teacher's stuff that were in each room. It was going to cost almost two hundred and sixty thousand dollars to clean all these boxes to get them old. We're doing it in-house. With us doing it in-house with our own janitors, we pay them their normal salaries. If we put it out to bid, you have to pay prevailing wage. So Jim Jake and his crew are cleaning them with the guidance of the hygienist. So we're saving, trying to save every penny possible.
Um, question number two. The drainage, is that RFP listed on our town website?
No, I didn't personally look at it.
Because I don't see, I don't see an RFP listed on the website.
It was put out, it was put out to bid, as Lisa said, six weeks ago. They got a bid back from B and L. And the price was just crazy and B and L couldn't get there until October. So then they put it back out to bid again, and now there's four or five bidders that have come out and looked.
But, but there's no RFP on the website?
I don't believe, I don't, I don't believe I had unlocked.
I didn't see any written specifications anywhere, what the, what the specifics of the assignment were. I, from my understanding, is people have gone out and met Eric and they, and walked through it.
Well, that was my, my question is, you know, you have to have the scope of work for someone to put out a reliable bid, that's all.
I don't think they've been ready to.
Each contractor that's gone out there has gone out there with Eric and Dick Layton. And they walked it and said exactly what's going to be done. The town's going to provide the pipe and the basins, and basically, it's just the rock, the stone, the sand, and the labor, and that's all. Is what I gathered from listening.
And like you said, from what you gathered, that's not an RFP, that's all.
It's a good point on process. Be better fit with details in writing, open to the public.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Anyone else?
Jerry Roberts, thirty-five in our Woben and Deep River Historical Society. Two things, just, um, the person that's being hired for the web for EDC. My understanding, there was no RFP put out for that. And you do have other web people in Deep River that wouldn't have had a chance to, to put their hat in the ring. Is that a normal thing, that you wouldn't put out an RFP for something like that?
Well, I believe the, the cost makes it, because the cost is less than five thousand dollars, it really doesn't have to go out to bid. It's always a good idea to get more than one bid, but that was handled by the EDC, not by the Board of Selectmen.
Fair enough. Finally, the other thing is for people to make comments about the music festival, what's the best format to do that? Is this, is the wrap-up meeting going to be publicly attended, or should people write stuff in, or how, what's the best way to make comments about that?
Either, either way, as I said, it will be, I'll announce it and it'll be on the website, you know. People are welcome to come. If you don't want to give your, up your time, send an email if they're detailed and it'll get shared.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Hi, I have a question. Hi. So Christine Mucci, fourteen Union Street. I, I was wondering if there is a process in regards to the signage for businesses. Tonight, I was driving back into Deep River and coming from Chester. And I know the smoke shop has been a topic, but they had a big blow-up doll out there. And I guess my concern with that is the message it gives to children, you know, and I just didn't know who's, who's responsible to go and have those conversations with businesses?
Well, somebody did send me that photo because they came in and described it to me, and I said, could you send me a picture, so I have it. And I was going to talk to Planning and Zoning first thing tomorrow morning.
I don't know if it's a possibility that maybe like giving zoning, I don't know, whether it be the commission or the department, like authority maybe for fines or, like, there's not, not big fines or anything, but a way to hold, you know, hold them accountable. We're dealing with Dunkin' Donuts, which, I mean, they changed their signing, they went against the whole agreement that we had established in two thousand and sixteen when they first came in. So I feel like years go by and they just push a little bit, a little bit, you know, more. This down here is pretty like in your face, you know, so.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay. Have a motion to adjourn? Oh, Dave, anybody, he's online. No. Motion to adjourn at seven oh nine?
So moved?
Second.
Okay. All right, meeting adjourned. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Hear ye, hear ye, that I call to order the Deep River Board of Planets Regular Meeting for June two thousand and twenty-four. It is, I, I would like to give the date because a hundred years from now, people are going to be watching this, and I want to make sure that they know exactly where we are at time. So that is the call to order. First item, actually, second item on our agenda is to approve the minutes from our May twenty-eighth meeting. Could I have a motion to do such?
Don't move.
Don't move. I have a first, second. Anyone have a second? Have a second, perfect. All right. Does anyone wish to discuss those minutes, okay? Uh, we will, several of the items that are called out in those minutes, we will revisit today. So all those in favor of approving the May twenty-eighth, two thousand and four minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, all right. With the concept of minutes in mind, we have a new face at our table. And Joy O'Brien is go, has agreed to be our, what title did they officially give him?
Recording.
Recording Secretary.
Clerk Secretary.
Clerk Secretary. I want you to be referred to in the proper fashion.
Thank you.
Let's see, number three, audience of citizens. And while we have citizens, do you have comments that you wish to make, citizens?
Yes, what's the price of getting a speed limit sign for the transfer station?
Ah, I do not know. It seems like you would be a better source of that, but I do not know. Do you know? What is the cost of signs? I do not know. We can certainly ask. All right.
Per rate of that, number of miles. Five miles is cheaper than forty.
Well, we can get you, the same, the same sign that you put to how much we have saved and that type of thing, we can get you a, Jonathan, go up there and put those sort of letters in and tell people to slow down or something, but anyhow, Carol will.
Do you think that there's a need for some speed signs of the transfer station?
Well, before you have an action or somebody gets hit, it's your choice. Because the way they try to come around that circle, I didn't know we had that many people that were related to Andy Granditelli.
With that in mind, we will chat about, there is a, and Carol is leading us through a soon-to-be redesigned up there, so. Hopefully, some of these will be adjusted with that redesign, so.
Is there a speed limit of the transfer station?
Nope.
What do you propose at the week? Five miles an hour. That will slow them down and also I'd like one that says, no cell phones while you're there. Because everybody seems to park right where everybody wants to get out and do stuff. And they could be on their cell phone for twenty-five minutes.
No, you're absolutely right. There's this temptation to pull in and stop. That's correct, uh, so yes.
I'll look into that, Paul.
Thank you.
Tommy, treasurer's report, okay?
Hopefully, everyone has, has one in front of them. Great, thanks. Just starting out with the general fund, general fund accounts, you see the balances, five million, nine seventy-eight, three ninety-seven. As we approach the end of this fiscal year, what I normally will do is I'll subtract out that capital improvements borrow amount to really come up with what our net amount should be. So we would end, end the fiscal year at about five million, two hundred and twenty-one thousand, two seventy-five. The reason I take that out is because those are actually loan proceeds, a holding account until we make disbursements. And so that's the reason why I actually will subtract that from whatever our general fund total is. And regarding the capital improvements borrow, there were no disbursements made during the last, last month. We did earn interest from last month of two thousand, fifty dollars and seventy cents on that account. That's based on a three percent interest rate with Liberty Bank. That's the highest rate allowable because of the type of account it is. ARPA funds, again, the American Rescue Plan Act, there was really no activity, very little activity for the last month. Our, the difference between last month and this month, the total is two thousand, seven thirty-two, twenty-six. Some of that is interest that we've accrued on that account at five percent. So that, left to be allocated, I think it's, is it around still two twenty-one? Carol, is that still, yeah, okay.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Uh, wire transfers that were made, there was only one made on, on June tenth for a million dollars. Went from Liberty Bank, the money market account, to our Citizens Bank, general, general fund account. And you look at the general fund account balance now, it's five hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight forty-two. We're going to last, with actually, the difference, we're down eight, eight hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred dollars in last month. But of course, now with, we'll be receiving tax monies, so that's going to reverse itself. So, but, so that general fund account balance will be pretty fluid now and I'll be making transfers into the municipal sweep money market accounts so we can get that five percent interest rate. The Deep River Garden Club, you'll see it says closed. Actually, what they did with that account, instead of closing it out, they reassigned a new tax ID number. So they took the town's tax, the tax ID number away, and they use, they're now using the Federated Garden Club of Connecticut ID number. So now they're going to be a five oh one C three tax exempt account, which will enable the Garden Club to solicit, solicit monies. So they took, they deleted the town signers, which were Carol, myself, and Jane Mather, who's my assistant treasurer, and then replaced with Sarah Layton and Nicole DeRozier, who are co-presidents of the Garden Club, and Lonnie Moscow, who is, is the treasurer. So you won't see that on, on our Deep River deposit account list anymore. I did transfer two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. We took that from that incubator at, at the bottom. If you look at the bottom, that Liberty Bank account, which now is fifty thousand dollars, fifty thousand, six oh six. So I transferred the two hundred and twenty-five thousand from that account, and it went into our municipal sweep money market account, which has two million, three hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred dollars. That was, as I was directed I was supposed to do. Our education equalization grants, we've, the monies have been fully dispersed from this fiscal year. So we did receive a million, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty-six dollars. And that had been issued in three different increments, ten, October thirty-first, January thirty-first, and April thirtieth. So I, I'm not sure how much we'll have available next year. But it'll be of the same increments, it'll be those three, the three times that it's dispersed. So the next, the first one that we'll receive in the next fiscal year will be on October, October thirty-first. If you look at the total balances, the, the, on the bottom, we're seven, seven million, eight seventy-one, seven seventeen. I subtract the capital improvements borrow from that and also the ARPA funds account from that to get a real, a real balance. So we're really at about six million, five hundred and eight thousand, three eighty-six. We're about a million, thirty thousand less than where we were last year. Upcoming bond issue payments, we've got the sewer construction bond, that's the, the monthly principal and interest payment that we do, we do send in every month, it's sixteen thousand, nine fourteen, seventy-six. It's, again, principal and interest. And the next one, the one that was due was on, is due, the next one due is set six thirty. So after that payment is made, we'll be down to three hundred and sixty-five thousand, eighty-six dollars and fifty-two cents. We're, and the original, the original amount was three million, three seventy-five. So we've only got twenty-two payments left on that bond issue. The other payment that was made in June was on June twenty-third for the Kirtland River Street Sewer Project Expansion. That was our eighth payment that we made out of the forty, forty years. So we still have thirty-two years to go on that, originally originated on June twenty-third, for six hundred and five thousand dollars. So every, every year, that twenty-three thousand, ninety-nine dollar payment is made. And upcoming payments we'll be making, the next ones that'll come due are in December. On December fifteenth, our capital improvements borrow account will be due, there's a ninety-five thousand dollar principal payment that will be made. And the present balance on that one right now is a million, two hundred and thirty-five thousand. And the other one is on eight fifteen, that's our energy upgrade, and that was for the town buildings, the elementary school, the town library, and the town hall. That, right now, is a balance of a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred, and we'll be making a payment, a principal paydown of twenty-eight thousand, two hundred. So when we make that payment, that will be our fifth payment out of ten. And I think that's it, unless someone has any questions.
Did you say that we have less cash this year than we had last year?
No, 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 I was just going from month, month to month. So we're down, we're just down. And it will just change now that the tax monies are coming in.
For that, in lots of ways, I thought there would be more money this year than, doesn't seem like it, does it?
Well, you know, I'm just saying that, that eight hundred and eleven thousand dollars is, is the difference from May twenty-eighth to June twenty-fifth. Okay. We're down because of, you know, accounts payables and, and whatever. But now that the tax revenue monies will be coming in, it just, it'll just go the opposite direction. We'll be showing, we'll be showing pluses.
I think this is the first year we've done it. Is that correct? We've accepted early?
It's the first year, it's nine, six years, but.
The only other thing I have is the, I'm just, I was just looking at the incoming, the money that's, the revenue, the revenues account for, for fiscal year end. For short-term investments, we had budgeted fifty thousand, and the current year-to-date revenues are three hundred and four thousand, two forty-eight. So we're actually netting out two hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars from that. And thanks to the, the high interest rates, so hopefully that, that will stay in place.
Tom, on the ARPA money, you said it five percent interest. What was our interest that we earned on the ARPA money?
Well, for the month, what it was for the month, Carmella, and not when I, I spoke to Anne Marie. There was a difference from last month to this month of two thousand, seven thirty-two. So a lot of that could be interest, it's based on the five percent. We weren't really sure if any checks were actually written on the ARPA.
They're so very minimal.
Yeah, so it's been very minimal, so that, most of that is probably interest that's accrued on that account for that particular month.
So does the six hundred and six thousand reflect the interest in that account now? also?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Any questions for Tom? All right, brings us to recommendation selection. Any actions on the recommendations? Carol, lead us on, do you have anything you want to start with?
Let's see. Well, the ARPA letters, so you did send out the ARPA letters, and you did hear back from, basically, if you guys recall, it was about one of the parking lot things, to send out a letter, Anne Marie, I'd already talked about that previous to putting it in the parking lot, to send out a letter to all the groups and commissions, group activities, organizations that received ARPA funds, and asked where they are, what they're spending, if they anticipate not spending at all, that sort of thing. And we did hear back from a few of the groups, the fire department was really good, getting back quick, and we are still waiting on a few other groups to get back to us. So, so that's progress, you know, we're waiting. Let's see, we did sign the, are about to sign the Chester Bulky Waste Contract for the year, that will be a hundred and five thousand for that to use, utilize the transfer station. And then we're also going to enter into the agreement to do the street sweeping for twenty-one thousand for the year. The food scrap pilot program came to an end. Anne Marie sent in our final report just the other day, so we're anticipating about seventy-five thousand coming back if we get, if we put all our, you know, dotted all our eyes, that's what we're hoping to get back.
Is that a reimbursement or cost of funds with our reimbursement?
Yeah, the grant was for a hundred and five thousand, and we were paid about twenty-four thousand and change to date. So, we're getting less than that. Playground a debit was done since we last met, so that was, looks really nice, they had a grand opening, we're down on our luck. And we did get two designs for police cars and the town vehicles. So, not the town vehicles, we were kind of moving forward, one town seal, that sort of thing, but, so that'll be something coming after the break.
Let's go, let's go, Jesus. While it is grand that you're getting information back on ARPA, that is not what we're going to talk about. We were, you were supposed to have information so we could move forward, so.
What information? What information are you looking for, like?
I wanted to know how much was available. And I'd like to pull it back, and I'd like the selectmen to give us indication of where they think we can cut. As you were all part of the budget process, there is lots of needs that are out there, and we are running out of time by year end.
Yeah.
So, there are members of this board who would like to have a special meeting in July focused on unallocated.
The board of selectmen is also having a meeting on ARPA, and we're gonna figure out what we're doing with the last two hundred and twenty-one, that's not, right now, not allocated. And we gave our.
Unallocate or re-allocate?
Right now, it's not allocated, we have two hundred and twenty-one thousand, we were talking about doing a hundred thousand for the transfer station, but we still don't have a price for the redesign.
Have you talked to the engineer? Have you gotten any more back from the engineer?
I wrote to the engineer today.
Yeah, all right. Now, how about taking some back from those, as part of what your memo should, can we take some back?
That is what our memo says, we gave them till the end of June. So, we're waiting, Park and Rec just had a large festival this weekend, so I think they have to figure out what costs they incurred, and to see what's left, and to see what they want to commit by December twenty-fourth. And I'm pretty confident, but I think the board of selectmen is kind of, are pretty confident there'll be some money left there, but at this point, I don't know what that figures.
What's the definition of money left, like?
Money unspent by December twenty-fourth, not promised, not contract signed.
They were permitted seventy-five, they incurred twenty-five. So, what is left, fifty? Over two percent?
I don't know what they incurred, because they just had their event. I don't know if they went over, under, or what for this year. So, all due respect, they'd like a little more time to get those in, but not, they just had the event, just finished on Sunday, bills are still coming in.
But it'll be somewhere fifty or less. It could be fifty, might be forty-five, depends if they went over or not. And Ramon, that was in another two weeks, you think?
Yeah, it'll happen the week after Fourth of July. You know, I was in on Saturday with the assistant treasurer, rewriting out the ARPA checks for all the bands, and the sound guy, and so, money was taken spent. I don't know, again, if we have all the bills, because now we're gonna get a police bill that'll come in for the police presence there and other things.
Do we have any sense that they had a budget before the meeting?
They were checking for twenty-five, but some aspects were putting them over, and one was the sixth policeman, but our resident.
We just talked about that.
Yeah, which didn't really end up being needed, but of course, it was an unknown, it was a first-year event, and I was fine airing on the side of caution, in case we had, you know, we had about seven hundred people there Sunday night, and it was a good crack. But I was fine overstaffing police, so they're gonna have to pay for that.
So, do you believe that you and the other selectmen will be ready to discuss before the Friday, mid-July, what is left, what you might consider bringing back, what we could commit? And again, I'm very concerned, this thing is owed by December, you must have contracts in place.
Exactly, we're aware of that. Anne Marie, do you think we can get some final concrete numbers in the next couple weeks?
Well, the selectmen will have to review the responses, how many people have been allocated to funds, and you'll have to decide whether or not you're gonna claw things back.
Right, well, I know, I don't wanna speak for the board of selectmen, we are planning to get together, but you are, you're the person that knows the numbers, so I don't wanna commit, except you're saying I can't do that in two weeks, is that something? Because we're gonna meet and talk, and then we can certainly meet with board of finance, maybe we can all meet again at the same night.
But we have to do the numbers first before we can make any decisions.
Right. Yeah, so as long as people are diligent and respond by June thirtieth, I think that's a very reasonable time.
And you will have, you will be working with the engineer on the redesign?
I'll reach out to them again, I'll give them a call tomorrow. I gave them a three-point bill to move out today. You know, I'm talking about capping at the line, so I'm like, I need a scope work, I wanna go after grants, I'm very anxious to get this moving.
Okay. Could you give us an update on your, I don't even know how many people, at least on board finance, are aware of the, what you called an OSHA drop by a inspection, spot inspection?
Oh, yes, that is a big thing. So, OSHA did a spot inspection, and they went to all, a lot of the town facilities, went to public works, the transfer station, the WPCA, the pump stations, Park and Rec office, social services, town hall, library. We are meeting with her in a week or so, she's getting back to us, she wants to meet in person with all her findings, and spend about a three-hour block here, again, going to all those facilities, meeting with the directors. So, at this point, we're assuming, because of the nature of the beast, that we're gonna have some violations. I, we have no idea what those violations are, if there's gonna be any costs associated with rectifying, or if it's a simple matter of, you know, we don't have our forms in place. At this point, I cannot speculate on what that might look like, but there typically are fines associated when OSHA comes to your properties, and fines violations, so. It could be a large ticket item, could not be.
So, we have no idea what that number is, I mean, are we sure that number is big?
We don't. And we do have, and we have found that we have a mold problem here in the basement, and we, Dick Layton is trying to set up a meeting with the environment people, but I think hygienists, that are industrial hygienists that are working up at John Minter, because they're on site. And then we can develop a scope work for what needs to be done here in the basement too.
What kinds of things is OSHA looking for besides mold?
Oh, so they did not look for the mold, so the mold was discovered on our own, and we did some air sampling. Before we got the air sampling back, OSHA showed up just to do a spot random inspection. So, she, what I've told, is she probably won't really address a lot of the basement, because she knows we have a mold issue, and that we are already addressing that in a different avenue. So, I think, like I said, some of the things she was looking for is some paperwork, you know, do you have this, do you have this, do you have this? Other things were like, oh, there's a hole in the floor, that needs to be, you know, there's a threshold missing, that, you know, it's a trip hazard, those kind of things. So, so it's not all just mold, and those, like, she really doesn't do a lot of that, she just is very concerned with the safety of our employees, you know? That's your labor focus.
All right, Carol, you sent Anne Marie off, so we'll ask Anne Marie to update the going off, to begin to get an idea what cost of a new firehouse would be, and new trucks. Anne Marie, could you give us at least what you think is, you think what you think, say what you think?
Here's the letter that I have, if anyone would like to see it, the ARPA letter.
So, I reached out to the, some of the fire commissioners, Tim, and asked them to review some of the capital items that they had put forward as part of the budget, and to work with the architects and engineers that they have been working with in regards to the plans of the firehouse, just so we can get a sense of the bigger ticket items as we discussed in the last meeting. They are in the process of reaching out to those professionals for the firehouse. We were trying to get a meeting set up either yesterday or today, but unfortunately, I had some things come up in my office, and I was unable to make that happen. And the fire trucks, the last estimate that we had gotten around those engines was about one point three million, but there has been a change in the, correct me if I'm wrong, environmental requirements.
With the engine, yeah.
With the engine, which should add about another hundred thousand dollars. So, I would anticipate if we were to purchase a new truck in the next year or two, it's spending around one point five million.
That's an extra two hundred thousand.
I'm anticipating the rate of increase in price to continue on the path that it's been going, regardless of that environmental piece.
So, your math would be one point five for one, once this times two.
It's three.
Yes, exactly. And you're, Tim is shaking his head. He doesn't like my math.
Three million.
No, 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 it's not three, it's one point five, you're talking about two smaller trucks after that.
Yeah, so they weren't asking for two engines, not another five-five-one, one more five-five-one.
Correct.
And then forestry trucks, service trucks, UTVs, which are cheaper, much, much cheaper.
Are they getting that from the study you had done?
Yes, it's all in that study.
And you're still nothing on that, nothing you would consider useful information on a new firehouse?
Nothing.
And it's almost dangerous at this point?
It is dangerous to speculate, in my profession.
So, Carol, send Anne Marie off, and you can see Anne Marie's off, collecting data, okay? I think this is a grand idea, to collect this information, and potentially put it on the ballot in November. Do the citizens of the town wish to do a new fire truck and buy a new fire truck? I believe it's a grand question and concept, and let's keep it moving, we can stop it at any time we want, as can the fire department, so, which is why, which is why Anne Marie has been, is working away, and Tim is working with her, so.
But the only thing I would add to that, if we're going down that road, is that we figure out the carrying costs of that, and make that translation as going on as clear.
You're absolutely correct.
What does that then mean to taxes, so that, and maybe have a couple of informations set up on that, so folks can know.
Again, we can stop this or continue it any time along the route there, but yes, we've got to answer how we're going to finance it, make an estimate of what does, that would cost and be effect on our mill rates, so, but it's a start, and that's, that's the conversation, so. All right, Anne Marie, how about if you take, one of the other things Anne Marie, other things, Anne Marie volunteered actually for this one, for capital budgets, it's one of the items that we've discussed that we think we need, a capital budget plan, I guess, as we look into the future, what kinds of capital do we need, and Anne Marie said, and in the process of collecting information for the budget, she collected information on capital. And I believe you have given that to all of us, so why don't you take us where you think we should go?
Sure. So, this sheet is, as Bud said, a combination of requests that we receive from various departments, every year at the time of the budget, we provide them with a worksheet that asks them to call out their capital requirements for the next five years. I could find no recent history of that ever having been consolidated and presented in a kind of format where we could get a sense of how much we need as far as total capital dollars. So, I took it upon myself to take a look at all of those requests, and attempt to kind of time them, so that, you know, we weren't spending no, no money on capital one year, and millions of dollars on capital the next. And as you can see, in that second out year, the twenty-five, twenty-six year, there's some highlighting for some of the bigger things, like a five-five-two replacement, and a forestry truck, a dump truck, and an over-the-rail mower. We are having a borrow roll-off during that fiscal year, it ends on April thirtieth of 2026. So, by my calculation, we could borrow for roughly two point two two five million, and, you know, making some assumptions for interest rates, you know, kind of continue the payment we've already been making, but be able to invest some back into our capital. And I put some notes at the bottom for some of the potentially more expensive items that we don't really have figures for yet, that have been brought to my attention, such as the firehouse, Essex Street Sewer Expansion, and a potential mold remediation in the basement of town.
So, what Anne Marie has provided, it's exactly what you promised, as we collected data for this budget, we began to collect capital dollars. I suggest if you use your imagination, there are lots of departments here that are not included. If we really wanted to focus, excuse me, we do, on a capital plan, we should begin to ask others to collect data, I assume the school, grammar school, will need some forms of something. This, like, new computers, and use your imagination, there's lots of things that can be added, but there is always a capital plan that is current in the town of Deep River, and we shall continue to add to it, I say. With that in mind, let's drop to the bottom of your page, Anne Marie. Certainly, the top is public works, fire department, fire department, library, revales here. Take us to the unallocated capital, and et cetera.
Sure. So, for the unallocated capital, you know, like I said, I kind of tried to smooth out these costs over five years. And I realized that we could kind of get to a point where, you know, if we pulled out that borrow and such, trying to keep a fairly consistent spend in capital year over year, so we're not, you know, having to increase the mill rate significantly to take things into account. And so, I landed at about, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and tried to work from there. So, that unallocated capital piece is just sort of to recognize, you know, if we try to hold our capital spend at a reasonably flat amount, taking into account things like inflation, you know, we may get to twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-eight, where we have a hundred eighty-four thousand dollars of unallocated capital, and we could decide, you know, the townspeople, you know, really need to see some budget cuts, we could cut that hundred eighty-four. Or I'm sure that there will be, to your point, additional capital needs brought up between now and then, we could use it on that.
So, it, okay, conceptually, Anne Marie, good job here, how are you going to fund all of this capital? Right now, you can see that she made a logical assumption that we would issue a bond. Others would come out, well, you've made a logical assumption that all capital is funded through that bond?
The bond-funded pieces are highlighted.
General taxation.
The bond pieces are highlighted, so they include the dump truck, the over-the-rail mower, the five-five-two replacement, the forestry truck, and the service truck.
That makes sense.
In my very much working theory.
What do we do, Anne Marie, about the things in this year that we, we have paid for?
Sure.
You know, the payloaders.
So I put those things in the current, well, the coming year, next week, for a couple of reasons. We've discussed that the payloader is certainly a need that may come up sooner rather than later. And I, as I think many of you are aware from our budget talks, we budgeted in a deficit of about a million dollars. And I do not think that will be the case. When all of the numbers are finalized, I think we will end up pretty even on the year. So we should have some money.
To cover these. And this doesn't take into account any properties we might sell?
Correct.
So then get Catherine, what was your question?
Um, this is very helpful, but it doesn't also, doesn't take into account any revenues from properties we might sell. We might decide we sell. You know, we've spoken about the possibility of a small antique fire station. I have no reason to move on that or any of the incubator properties or anything like that, but there may be some other revenues coming in. You're looking puzzled, Bud.
Well, I'm not sure if we sell property, what effect it has over a list, but here's the amount of capital we want. I'm going to sell the following building, why does that affect the amount of capital?
The reason I'm mentioning it is, is we're, the premise here is that we are going to pay for this by bonding, and then there'll be a certain carrying cost for that. That may change somewhat if additional revenues are identified. Just a side note to this.
To your point, this, as we expand this project, we should begin to identify what sources will we use to fund some of this. So this is what we're beginning, yes. All right, now Anne Marie, you wish to do magical stuff with your project, don't you? You want us to approve it because?
Uh, no, I thought we had talked about we don't really need to go down that road.
You don't need to, you don't want us to approve this plan so that it will reflect.
No, so.
Would it be approved, happy with it?
To give, to give you all some background as to what Bud's referring to. The state has changed the rules around its LoSiP grant in the current year. In the past, it's behaved as most of our grants do where we will pay the money out and then request reimbursement. But now it works more like the ECS grant that Tom refers to where they send us the money automatically based on a calculation. And then it's up to us to prove after the fact that we did in fact spend it on allowable costs. One of the things that we need to do is show that our legislative body approved certain capital costs. These rules were kind of released a little bit late in the game. So what I am planning on doing is booking some of the paving or using some of the paving projects that we put out to bid recently, using LoSiP money for that, which would free up some of the general fund money in that road maintenance line that would either fall down into surplus or be reallocated to other.
Have you introduced the concept that we've gotten more LoSiP than what we've allocated for?
I have not introduced it, but we have gotten more LoSiP than we budgeted for. We budgeted for about $30,000 and we received $46,000.
And so how we're going to use it is, we're simply going to say, well, we've got quite a bit of capital, road capital budgeted. We'll just use the incremental LoSiP on that, and that we're going to say is in the capital plan approved by the town.
I'm saying that because we put that road maintenance line in the budget with the knowledge that it was to be used for paving, in addition to adding another $150,000 to that line for paving that was discussed at town meeting, I have sufficient backup to reasonably use LoSiP money for those paving projects.
Good, and when we look at the budget numbers, I see you have already reflected, we've already received the 56, the 15.
46, yes.
Gotcha, 46, I get it. Now, a prior, when I wrote the agenda, Anne Marie and I had an assumption, which we have subsequently abandoned, that we would use part of the LoSiP to pay for the painting out at the Windburg station.
And that is because that project had never been approved at a town meeting, but in taking that money in the general fund budget for paving and putting some of that paving towards LoSiP, we free up some money in public works that we could reallocate to capital to pay for that 75,000.
Sorry, folks. At, when we get into the budget and identify some surpluses, I think we will return to the subject of the Windburg fire. Does anyone have any questions on capital, capital budget plan? This is something we put on our, what did we call it, to the.
Parking lot.
Parking lot.
Those three items at the bottom, firehouse, Essex Street sewer expansion, the town fall mold remediation, is that part of this capital plan or is that, these are extras that are coming at us?
These are things that are coming at us that we know, I mean, they will be capital expenditures and they will be significant. So I just wanted them to be front of mind when considering capital. I don't want them to be forgotten.
The only thing I would add about the Essex Street sewer expansion, the WPCA board has not voted or made a move to do that. It's been mentioned by a couple of individual members, but I don't know that that will even happen in the next year. So it's, it's out there, but it's not really there.
Correct.
It's not there like the request for certain fire trucks and that sort of thing that's solid and backed up.
Mm-hmm. That's why it's at the bottom.
It's at the bottom. All right, cool, all right. Let us turn to, unless anyone else has other items, let us turn to a review of the budget that Anne Marie sent to us. Let's, I think we, we will, we'll deal with it, but let's begin our focus. Oh, I'm going to find it where it is. Let's begin our focus by dropping down to the, the town, the highway department. There it is. And if you drop all the way down, we will go, we'll start all over the top, but I just want to focus on highway department. Highway department, and Anne Marie again is going to share her estimate. Fire department, if you look at the budget you are looking at now, anticipates 478,000 of a unused amount, which gives us the potential to move some of the unused funds initially committed in the budget process to some other potential use. Anne Marie has done some work with the highway department, and I want her to talk about what could be used in the road crew salary lineup, what could be unused.
So I anticipate them to have some surplus available to them. I would probably put it at around $20,000 comfortably at this point.
In that lineup?
In that line item. I'm trying to be conservative, but as, as you're aware, the highway department did make some capital requests in the current year budget. The more significant of those is a payloader. No surplus in here could cover that, but the other was for a, a ride on blower, which Eric has gone out and gotten some quotes for and would cost about $10,500. And he would like to use his surplus to purchase that piece of equipment. If the board feels that that is a prudent use of the funds, they would have to vote to move that money out of that salary line and into the capital non-recurring fund.
And we are allowed to move up to, my, we're allowed to move up to $20,000?
That's correct.
And we could approve without going, without taking account of legal approval. We could approve an expenditure of up to 20. So we could, we, this board could approve that 10,000?
500.
What does he use? I do not know tools. What is a riding blower?
So it looks sort of like a lawnmower with a leaf blower attached to it. It, he kind, he gave me a write-up, I can read it out if you would like. The public works department is requesting to use already allocated funds to purchase a new SCAG windstorm. This piece of equipment would easily become a frequently used item. It is a commonly used tool between landscapers and municipalities alike. It will reduce time needed to clean roadsides after storms, including hurricanes and tropical storms. It will reduce the amount of man-hours needed to sweep the town roads in spring and fall as a full crew is not needed. Will assist the town crew in maintaining town properties throughout the year. Blowing leaves, grass clippings and roadsides after mowing is its primary purpose. It will reduce having a public works team member walk multiple miles with a 30-pound backpack blower strapped to his back. It will reduce operating hours on the new street sweeper. And as safety is a concern while working on a roadside, the windstorm gets public works off busy roads quicker and with much higher visibility while working. It will make cleaning roads during emergency situations faster when minutes count. For example, when trucks fill stone on Route 80 coming out of Haynes Materials. It will help prepare and clean up paving projects and can be used at the transfer station to keep the leaf and brush pile clean and orderly.
Let's say the board of finance, there is money that's going to be left over in this function and in this one particular lineup. Would you be willing to move 10,500 out of that lineup over to capital? Anne Marie to purchase a riding blower? Thoughts? No?
No.
Why not? If the town crew needs it, why wouldn't that be useful?
It sounds to me like something that isn't, isn't a necessary component of maintaining roads and highways and sidewalks and whatnot.
Interesting, it is.
That's his opinion, that's my opinion.
I will say, when Osha was here, she put decibel meters on all the guys when they walked out with all the backpack blowers. And it might come in that they were too high. So we might, it might be a recommendation to buy something that isn't so close to people's hearing. And she was concerned with them on the road. She wanted to make sure they had the correct safety nets. So again, this might be a way to get them off the roads faster.
Things I'm surprised we didn't hear in any of the budget process, I missed that this was.
This is new, it was not part of the budget.
No, it was.
Oh, what?
It was.
Wait, you're on that, okay.
Yes, she actually requested about $13,000, was able to negotiate the price down to $10,500.
Anyone else wish to comment, thoughts?
The only other comment, it sounds from this description that it's needed for a lot of the road cleanup. When I think about blower, I think so much of, of the maintenance of our properties, we contract out to third-party vendors to do, the fields and the town and the library. So I'm just wondering and would look for affirmation that there is enough roadwork to carry this with so much being contracted out to third parties. And if it's extra money, why wouldn't it go back into the general fund?
Yes. Yes, sir. It will, it's not you. The county have an obligation to provide tools to those who do the tasks we asked them to do.
It's a machine that will help them when they do the sweeping in the spring and fall. Be less wear and tear on the.
And I don't mean to be argumentative, but that's a lot of money and it's at the best use of our money when we have so many other things in this town that need to be addressed.
So on these sweepers, the number one thing that wears out are the brushes.
When we just bought a new one.
Correct, and the brushes wear out. Brushes about $6,000 per set of brushes. So when you do it in the spring and the fall, it's probably $6,000 plus in the spring and $6,000 in the fall. The blower will help blow some of that, so it's less sweeping on the brushes. So you're investing money to save money on maintenance. That's just one. Timmy will know because his shop is there. Last year, I believe it was, a tractor trailer came out of Haynes and dumped half a load of stone in the middle of Route 80. Then the town crew had to get there and clean it up. That blower could have been down there, boom, 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 and done. So that's.
What'd they do instead?
They got the payloader, they got the old relic sweeper.
And shelves and rooms and that and all.
Right, and meanwhile, you're putting people at jeopardy. The people that are driving down around the corner there and all of a sudden hit the stone. So again, it's, we can go back and forth.
Right, we can, and my sense is if we have many other big items coming up, that that's where money should go.
Again, like you said.
There's seven opinions.
There's opinions, but coming, no, I'll leave it at that, let's go.
Any other thoughts?
I know there's other board of finance members that aren't here that have questions for the money that's allocated.
So can we, Anne Marie, can we deal with it until I? Or is it closed? We have to ask for a new record, it will go past you.
And that price would change. There's a deal going on through the end of the month.
If I have no appetite for the board of finance, I will say no and revisit it if Eric wants to come in. All right. Let us now drop down, similar conversation, let's drop down to visiting nurses. If you remember, in visiting nurses, we have budgeted $20,000 for a, my nearest spot, yes. That's where I want to be, right? Is it visiting nurses? $20,000 for the contribution we give to.
Page five.
It's going up, okay. Public health, there's Anne Marie.
Yes.
I'm looking for the $20,000. Oh, there it is, good, it's in the lower value nurses, okay. We have decided not to make that payment. Here's my question to you. Can we, would you be willing to move 7,500 out of that line? Move it over to capital to cover the cost of painting the Windburg station? Anne Marie, any thoughts? They asked for it in the budget, we did not give it to them because they didn't have any money available. But here is money left over in the current budget that we could meet that need.
May I ask a question of how you operate the budgets, but I realize we have an end of year coming up where you want to allocate something. If we end up with this $20,000, does it go back to the general fund? And it could be sitting there in case we get a whopper of a bill on the mold remediation? Could that be used?
You're absolutely right. Again, I push back, we have obligations to maintain our facility.
Yes, although I'm not asking, I just wondered if that was, if that's how it technically operates.
Yes.
So, okay, thanks, that's helpful.
We could then reallocate if we wanted to, but that's correct. Here's an opportunity to get one of the, fund one of the capital requests that we were not able to fund. And have an appetite.
If we're triaging importance of, I mean, I would ask if the jaws of life would be like earmark. I know that doesn't cover the whole part of it. Can we earmark that money for something like that instead of?
That's one of the things I hope to do with our, so that's correct. At 60 for the old jaws of life.
Yes, just over, right?
Is that the most current price, Tim, 60? Adam has a meeting with the vendor, is it Tuesday, Anne Marie, has Emily sent an email?
I think so.
Yeah, to give enough to date the price.
All right, 60. 60 is the numbers we've been talking about, and that's one of the votes that I, that's one of the reasons I want to start moving on. Do you send the lines for that?
Sixty for what?
Jaws of life. So people are caught in their car, they can open the car. All right. From the silence, I'm thinking that no one has an appetite to move this unused money to paint the firehouse.
How much is it to paint the firehouse?
I don't know, I've been, I've been from God so far.
How long has it been unpaired? Wow, oh wow. That was, I'd have to look at it, it's an older bit, but it was the pressure wash and clean the whole place and then put some sort of sealant stain on it.
And the more it's unprotected, the more chance the wood's going to rot?
Yeah, we just did a whole bunch of, two or three years ago, we did a whole bunch of siding, rock repairs and painted the trim last year or the year before, we did all that, window replacements, we've done.
Well, it's not long ago we did it, right? We put this aside. We put the siding up.
No, yeah, you're right. Two, 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 two months ago.
It's permanent?
Yeah, we did a whole bunch of rock repair.
A company did that?
I'm sorry. Did a company do that? Yes. Yeah.
I have no appetite for painting the firehouse. Painting preservation.
No? Could that money go to something they need more than painting the firehouse? Could it be put towards another to add on to something else, a cost, to reduce that cost, to get that other something done? If we have more money in the general fund?
That is what they asked for in their capital fund. So I assume they made that decision. Tim? For it allocated.
But from what I know of what we put in for, that would be about the only thing you could fund that's on the capital request with what you're talking about with the extra money.
But she's talking about piecing, piecing all the balloon bits together.
I don't know what the little bits add up to. We'll just have to look at the list and see. But yes, I mean, the jaws of life are definitely more important.
Than painting the fire station.
Yeah. But again, it's preserving your town buildings and keeping up with your maintenance. Like Fletch said, you have, you have to do it. Not doing it now. It costs you more down the road. Other than the jaws of life and painting the firehouse, what else this year other than the obviously the fire truck and stuff?
Big. I know Adam sent out an email last week, rain covers and stuff.
Oh, yeah, knock that one off.
So out of this year, primarily the other capital requests are, I call it maintenance capital. So structural firefighting gear that needs to be replaced on a regular basis and the apparatus rust, flash, corrosion repairs. Each of those are twenty-seven, estimating twenty-seven thousand and twenty thousand respectively.
You know, is there a creative way to paint the fire station? Are there people in town that have extra stain that they could give guys? You know, somebody might have a gallon, somebody might have a gallon, that you can collect and you can get the fire station painted rather than spending seven thousand five hundred dollars.
I bet. If you can find somebody that has enough stain all at the same time.
Well, wait. All right, Emery.
All right, painting the firehouse, going one, second. Anybody? All right. I'm hearing silence.
What was the question?
Does anyone wish to move forward, make a recommendation first? That we take about seven thousand five hundred out of the, this line item, move it to capital? Thanks, Larry. I hope yes.
I will say that the Winthrop station now, we had a bunch of volunteers worked all weekend and they created a driveway in the back of the firehouse. And put in a parking lot back there, which is really good for the safety of the guys and gals. Show up for a call, now they can pull their cars off Route eighty. So that was all volunteer effort, so keep that in mind. But they do a lot with volunteer efforts.
And then what happens to the fire station? It's getting painted.
Maybe they did that, so you'll get in the...
I asked for the updated. Are you still comfortable with that, the volunteer guy? Everybody?
I, I didn't get any updated numbers from them.
You didn't get us an updated number?
Yeah.
And is it broken out, materials and labor? Like how much for stain and how much for labor?
I think it was. It was, it was an old school hand grid.
All right. I think we were able to get your numbers.
I guess I, I got it, but there you go.
Revisit it.
I just want to clarify something. So as we're talking about this money being left over currently, if a decision is not made by June thirtieth to reallocate it to something, it will automatically fall into the general fund.
That's correct. All right, now first, we're going to move seven thousand five hundred out of this line item to capital.
Well, I would like, I would like current work occurring. Invoice or, you said that invoice is kind of old? It was old. I would like a refreshed, you know, quote, maybe, if it goes up to eighty-five hundred or nine grand.
Then we're going to have to revisit it. So let's get an accurate, an accurate quote tonight.
You could move ten and have a surplus in the capital fund.
But then what goes, what happens if it's six?
Stays in capital. We can reuse it for other capital.
So clarify for me, if that money doesn't get spent on stain, painting the firehouse, it goes into the general fund and from the general fund can then be put towards one of these other items?
Oh, well, when you say one of the other, I don't give a... No, we would have to make it out, we would have to make a decision to move it to something else.
But it could be just like the firefighting gear. Seven thousand five hundred dollars could go towards that.
Yes. Yes. All right, so if we change, we're going to take ten thousand out of here, move it to capital to cover an anticipated seven, five, eight thousand. Whatever wouldn't be spent would stay in capital, be available to us for future capital. That's the first and second. Do I have any conversation? All right. All those in favor of taking ten thousand dollars, moving away from the, out of the, is it visiting nurses, over to capital to cover the cost of painting the Winthrop station? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? All those not voting? Silence?
Yeah, there's silence right now. I just want an accurate poll and I think just through...
You heard Mary Ann. It goes to the general fund. We have to start all over again. We don't do it. It goes to your front, it goes to the general fund.
I know, June thirtieth it goes to the general fund. We have one more meeting. We have one more meeting before the next, correct?
It's a, this is your meeting.
Before it gets moved, we don't have one more meeting.
No. That you want a special meeting, because?
Yeah, you got five days. Five days. Five days.
And then it automatically goes into your general fund? So why are we having this discussion?
Because I want to paint the firehouse. It needs painting. It's one of our buildings. Why don't you take care, why don't we take care of what we have as our infrastructure? Seven, five, maybe, none. So let's move ten. You got twenty sitting here. If you don't use it, stays at capital. Still want to do it.
I have been keeping, I, I think that it's important that we maintain the...
I do too. That's the question. All right, let's do it again.
Do it again.
All, all those in favor of moving ten thousand out of visiting nurses into capital? Cover the cost of painting the Winthrop fire station. Please say aye. Two. All those opposed? One. Motion carry. Oh, I have to vote. I'm in favor. There are four of us. Okay. I vote in favor. All right, we shall move on.
It's just disheartening that we moved ten thousand dollars for one and not ten thousand dollars for another one. That's all I have to say.
Another opportunity?
Well, we asked to move ten thousand five hundred for the town crew. And we said they voted no. But we moved ten thousand dollars for the fire department, which, yes, I'm all for taking care of our assets, our buildings. But we do it for one and not the other. That's all I'm saying.
It's not mutually exclusive. It's going for discussion for the next, for the next one.
No.
No, it's going to go in the general fund and then, so that was the decision made at this point. We'll just move forward with that.
I'm just saying...
It's not, it's not favoritism. That's what it sounds like. It's painting the ball to cross the table.
Yes. Now, let us return to the top of the budget. While this is the June thirtieth, actually, since we haven't hit June third a couple of days before, let us look at the categories. Let's start with selectmen. Let's, unless anyone wishes to go through each of the line items, I suggest selectmen. We still have a payroll for the selectmen. So you'll probably break even, maybe a few dollars left over in elections. Elections, I'm going to suggest that elections are probably going to be the same thing. Emery, do you feel that we have the registrar voters that are in here, that when we voted on the town?
Yes.
It's in here?
We have, we have a few more expenses that'll hit against those salary lines.
That's what, both lines, the?
Yes.
Registars, elections, okay. But I don't see them going over. I think there'll be a small surplus there as my theme here. Town operations, um... What do you think? We've still got fuel, water, electricity. They're going to, oh, and telephone. You use them and you're a bill, you will be billed in July, correct? So while we have six thousand left, what do you think? We may go over that line? That would be my thought as well. But not much. Not much.
Next, a question, please, on town building and materials. It looks like we have a balance of twenty thousand?
That's correct.
So going along with these same discussions about maintaining our town properties, are there any identified uses there?
Excellent question. We've been talking about that. Here's the frustration. It will put you over for the entire function if you call upon it.
Oh, I see. So, so could we, could we? I'm just wondering then, on your same logic, do we want to take the thirty-six to three ninety-nine in June?
No, I want page one.
Or are we here specifically?
Like the visiting nurses wasn't ever going to over, so you want to take that way? Because it was the bottom line was normal.
And a theme that I've introduced, and it's nothing more than introducing, I'm trying to get us to begin to focus on the bottom line for a function so that we have more ability to participate or play around. That's a hard phrase, play around. But to move monies within the line items. As long as we do not go over a function line. Which is therefore the conversation, why don't you use town, unused town buildings? Because we will go over for the entire function. All right, that puts us up to, I lost her. Town clerk, town clerk should be fine. Maybe a little left over.
I'm sorry. I still don't understand with this sixty-three hundred extra, that cannot be allocated anywhere.
No, it's going to be spent.
Oh, well?
Yes.
So balance remaining, but it's still going to be spent.
It's going to be spent.
Because those are coming in.
Exactly.
All right, thank you. I clarify.
Same question. You're going over for the entire function or? Which is sort of what we're trying to introduce. Stay within, stay within the total that the town authorized for that function. And which would hopefully give us some ability to move around within the function. It's one of the things we're thinking about. Town clerk should leave us a small surplus. Tax collector should leave us a small surplus. Actually, assessor should be a fairly large surplus, shouldn't it? She's got forty-three thousand, forty-six thousand.
A lot of her software bills coming in at the end of the year. I just saw one for twelve thousand dollars.
So the software payment for the year, okay. So again, I do believe we will not go over that line. But there will not be the large surplus. I was hinting at that there. Board of Finance, we're fine. Tax collector, fine. Special services, we do believe we're going over with special services, don't we? What paging is weird on my computer. Special services, um... Emery, remind us, and you've reminded us, me, several times, the Fire Dog Fund survey, Dog Essex, you have not changed that in this budget. You're changing it in the next one. That is the agreement we have with Essex. You, we've changed the name there. But, so we have gone over on the lease in this note, right? So what does that leave us with? Are we over? I can't get to that line.
Yeah, contingency is what...
Oh, the contingency. Is that your, yes, there you go. Is that your animal issues for those part?
It is an awkward drive, drainage issue.
And awkward drainage issue. And we decided to put it here, you and I have discussed it, as opposed to putting it in the roads. You like it here because it's...
Because it's contentious. Well, when we first started paying for all of these things, it was very unclear how much of this was a road issue. And I think we are still flushing out exactly what we are or are not responsible for.
Well, arguably, it doesn't matter if you go, if you put it here, I suppose, through roads where we had, but still we get the bottom line of the road, just what it won't affect. Planning zoning, we should have a few dollars there. Am that true? That planning development, they haven't spent eight thousand five hundred. They will charge us for that.
I need to do some research into that.
But it doesn't change my theme that there should be dollars left over in that function. Building inspector has gone over and will continue to go over. But remember, when he goes over, he charges fees. When we get to revenues, you will see that he has excessively, in excess of what we initially budgeted for. He considers himself to be a generator of revenue. In New Orleans, same theme. We had an opening in New Orleans for quite a while, so there should be a fairly substantial surplus there, shouldn't there? Of the amount of the eight, they got. Insurance and bonds at the breakeven. Employee benefits, note, Emery is waiting to the clock, stroke of eleven fifty-eight before June thirtieth to make the pension fund payment. But it is still here, so it's a bit deceiving to say that there is a surplus in that line item. Same is true with medical insurance. You will be paid, you will pay in July for the June premiums. That sixty you have left over, that you will not, you do not claim that to be permanent?
I don't think we've paid everything out of that line yet, no.
But I'm, again, I don't think we're going over. I think there'll be a bit left over there. Police protection, the story has been told before. There should be a surplus. We will pay that resident trooper number. It always gets confusing why they don't build that earlier, but we will pay that. And there will be leftover funds. Let's have a quick cast on funded services. We are continuing to carry in this budget the, what we pay our constables for special duty. Are you up to date on that? I don't think you're quite, I looked on this. Are you good on that? It breaks you and blows out? All right, good. Fire department, now we have received an email from, we'll call it the fire department, Adam to be specific. They, they're going over, anybody can participate here, over in vehicle maintenance. They believe they will be approximately two thousand dollars over budget for the things in their control. They will go over vehicle maintenance. Is that an accurate number? They're over the sixteen to eight? Is that, okay. And, but, but they will, they will not do the water hole maintenance and a few others. So they will only believe they will be over under what they control. Remember the last one, the fireman's insurance, pension and sub- insurance is all under our control. They will be over budget by two thousand dollars. Fire marshal is fine. Communication center is fine. We just talked about highway department. Absent moving money over to capital, they should provide a fairly substantial, their general road maintenance. They will not, you do not think, we do not think, they will incur all of the road maintenance costs this year?
I think they'll spend a good portion of it, but I do think there will be money left over.
Okay. Does he have other things he can do with it? Okay, so we should expect some of those dollars to come back to general fund. Same with, through with the waste removal recycling. We've got, there was an opening out there for quite a while, so we should have a small surplus there as well. Are all costs in, like in the recycling fees and everything, where they, they paid add to the back?
After the back.
Yeah, they get it all after.
After, all right, but I'm still expecting, they're certainly not going over, I'm expecting the fairly close, all right. Let's, let's look at redemption of debt, we know that the new bond we had not budgeted correctly, we will go over on that line by what, about fifteen hundred dollars? As Tom pointed out, we've got that Kirtland Street payment, one forty-seven at the end of this month, so we'll be slightly over there. Elementary, anybody, it's a guess, elementary supervisor, as you can see on this sheet, they've got a surplus of three hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars of unspent funds, but we should not expect that to remain, they begin to, as we go through the summer, they reconcile, reconcile some of that, but they should have some surplus, not to that magnitude. And the regional school, you can see that they billed us one dollar a month, which I believe we should ask for back.
Let's put a couple zeros there.
Just, just to make their life a little, uh, unhappened. Okay, and the general government, capital, we are doing fine there, LOSEF, we have talked about, you have budgeted the, we had the fifteen, let's see, we budgeted thirty, and the forty-five is in here?
The forty-six is in revenue.
I can see we've got remaining, say that again, it is in here or...
It's in revenue. I have not updated it.
Oh, yeah, well, then there's already, you put it here, okay, guys, in revenue, so, all right.
So, but do we have a rough sense of really what's left over when we go through all these lines, we don't, we might know in a month?
I'll have a better idea in a month, I'm planning on closing the books to invoices as of August 31st, so I should be able to give you a true surplus at our September meeting.
No, we do not know exactly, although the purpose of what we just went through is, I don't believe we have any large over expenditure. So I expect us, we budgeted eighteen, two fifty-four, I expect us to come in about that or a little bit less than that.
Budget twenty point four.
It's, I'm looking at current year... Oh, net working, the first one, net working budget is our budget, the twenty-three, six, nine, okay, cool, and we have spent eighteen, two, five, four today. We still have over two million dollars to spend, so we should have a fair, I, I guess I'm gonna leave this conversation, not knowing certainly that we should have a fair... Where would we have found, it's driven by the school, a lot of it is driven by the school and the highway department, right?
School, highway department, pension payments.
Oh, pension payments, which we never go on, so...
I'll spend it tomorrow, don't worry about it.
I agree that you sit there on the thirtieth, the twenty-ninth, the, we're at the middle of the night, send it off, okay, but there's, I do, I do seriously, we will underspend our budgets, which is substantially different than what we said we were going to do. Now, let's see if we can speed up, let's go all the way to revenues, and we'll celebrate revenues, this is where the real celebration comes, we won't spend a whole lot of time other than we'll celebrate the final line. Look at the first line, property taxes current, if you remember, we get from the assessor, the, look at the tax base, we apply a mill rate to it and assume that people will pay ninety-eight percent of the taxes they're paid, the rest will go into a surplus and we'll get it in the prior years. So, the number that is here under property taxes current is ninety-eight percent of what we've sent out charged, which is why we have collected ninety-eight point zero two, slightly more than what we were assuming. The, now, note that we give a tax relief to the elderly, we give a tax relief to the fire department, we put that in our budget, but the numbers that are collected reflect those, those tax relief, so we should, when we get to the bottom line, we should be adding that forty-two and that thirty back, okay? So we have over collected, I suggest over collected, our revenues are about a hundred seventy-three, a hundred seventy-four thousand dollars more than what we expected, we'll stop periodically and celebrate. Look at the building permits, that again is why we have a building structure paying more, we've over collected by forty-six thousand dollars building permits, okay? Town clerk, is that the one I want, oh, short-term, short-term investment funds, Tom has already complimented your success, over two hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in excess of what we had budgeted, okay? Let's keep going down, infrastructure again, we've chatted about, LOSEF is coming in more than what we have budgeted, by fifteen thousand, I'm trying to call out those that are interesting. There is way down on page, first page of, there is in God's Grants for Municipal Properties, hundred and four, we get that virtually on the very last day, so I give you confidence that we will get that, okay? WPCA pays the town, thirty thousand dollars for the town services, we should collect that anytime that Anne Marie decides to collect it from them, so, so while we appear to be not recollected at the moment. Public safety, you were giving us confidence, the public safety numbers are good, right? So let's just drop all the way, we budgeted, I'll get to the right number here, budget nineteen oh nine nine, we have collected nineteen five... What is it, first line is, oh, that's prior year, different line, current year budget, nineteen three sixty-seven, and we have already collected nineteen five forty-four, hundred seventy-seven, but remember, we have not received that state fund, we should, I suspect revenues are going to come in close to half a million dollars more than what we've budgeted, too high? Too high, four hundred, can I hear four, three? All right, anyhow, I give everyone confidence once again, that we will not be a million short, we should get, if not slightly in excess with surplus, but we certainly will not spend that million that we talked about. So, does anyone have any questions on the budget? Again, the budget will continue through the summer, Anne Marie is open for a, an August, so we would come back here at the end, or end of September, and we would move dollars around. Questions, anyone, thoughts? Any additional business, any other thoughts, or anyone to comment on?
I'm just wondering if we could have a, a quick update on the moving pension fund managers, how's that coming along?
It, it, I was unfortunately at the sake of a bit of a backseat, I have not had the bandwidth to take care of some of those things back.
Just following that in, so when you do make that payment, it will be vested by our current fund manager.
Which they, the new folks did recommend doing, so...
All right, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Can I give kudos to Anne Marie though, she's been working all week by herself, her assistant was in the hospital last week, and, so she put all this together and she's been working like a dog doing it, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Oh, I don't know, she was fine.
All right, so I have a, I have a first, we're going to, we're going to adjourn, can I have a second? I said you, thank, you can be first, you can't be both first and second.
I'll be second.
Although it's in favor, say aye, all right, thank you everybody.